Digital format, we have been, without objection, we'll forego the prayer and the pledge, and immediately go to the roll call. Sandy, are you on?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and do the roll call.
David? St. Columbia?
Here.
Rocket? Franklin? Ethelie? Forward?
Here.
Monica, this is full of says here. Monica's own. And Wendy is too, but I don't know if they heard you.
Okay, alrighty.
Their microphone muted.
We got four. So we're just missing Don and Chris.
Don, I saw Chris, but I don't, maybe muted too.
Well, let me, I'm getting used to this still, just like everybody else, let me welcome the media, I see Andrew Bagley's on the phone, I believe KGIW is on, and I apologize if anybody else is not on, that's in the media, and any guests that we have, just want to welcome all of you to the council meeting, as unusual as this might be. Sandy, do we, are we gonna do the minutes for the second May meeting?
No, second meeting in May, we'll do the minutes and the treasurer's report.
Okay, so Derek, we're gonna do the second, the second meeting this month, we'll do the treasurer's report?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll pass the minutes and the treasurer's report on the agenda, and that begins our business. Mr. Collier, are you there?
Yes, sir.
I'll just kinda introduce it, yes, and then we'll let you present anything or say anything you want to say, and then we'll go from there, answer questions. Yesterday morning, about mid-morning, I guess it was, we received a notice of a boil order for what is the West Helena Water System, as most of you know, but if anybody doesn't know, even though we're merged cities, and our water department is under one city, we still operate two different systems, as far as our water plants go, one in Helena, one in West Helena, as it was before the merger, in terms of our water treatment, anyway. So yesterday morning, about mid-morning, we received a notice for a boil order that was a result of two consecutive tests that came back exceeding the legal minimum requirements for E. coli and chloroform contamination at at least one of those locations, and the, today, the State Department of Health sent down three or four people, and they did what they call a Level 2 assessment. They go out and check to see if our chlorine levels are where they ought to be, in those places where the contamination was considered above the legal limit, and the levels, and again, Ben Zane can, can correct me here if I say something not, not correct, but the content, the, I'm sorry, the chlorine levels, the disinfectant that's added to the water was found to be adequate, and so they are preparing, they also looked at why it might have happened, recommendations to prevent it from happening again, and so forth. So that report that is being, they've gone back to La Rock, Ben Zane and I met with them today, before they left, after they did their investigation, basically what they'll do is a public report that'll be for consumption, and I plan to make it, you know, available to the public on the city's website and elsewhere, and also we'll try to make sure we get it emailed to the city council, that explains their, you know, what their findings are as far as how, what happened, how it happened, and how to prevent it from happening. Now, going forward, they have to take, I believe it's, is it 16 or 18, Ben Zane, consecutive, is it nine tests tomorrow and nine tests the day after that?
Yes.
Okay, so, going forward, they will take nine separate samples tomorrow, and send them to the state lab, and I think we drive them up there, and then the following days, tomorrow's Wednesday, so on Thursday they take another nine, and drive them up to the state lab. If those 18 tests or samples come back adequate, or safe is better word, then we'll release the boil order as soon as they come back. Those results are expected to come back no earlier, certainly, late Friday was mentioned, but, but midday Saturday was more realistic expectation, and so, in other words, the boil order probably couldn't be lifted any earlier than sometime Saturday, they do prioritize it because there's a boil order, but they have to let the samples, I can't remember what the word was, but they can't, they have to let it sit to make sure it settles or something before they can adequately rely on the testing. This is only for what would have been the city of West Helena, so, for the water system that provides water to what we used to say was the city of West Helena, the area of what was the city of Helena is serviced by two tanks in Helena that have tested safe, and so the water on this side is fine, no, but no boil order, only on the west, on the west side. That is pretty much, when the notice was issued, the water department does what it always does, whenever there's anything like that, and they immediately send it out through their email system to customers who have email, and to the local media that are listed, that includes the radio stations, I'm not sure if it includes the local paper, but I did talk to or send something to them as well, so, did not go, I don't believe it went to any regional, state media, you know, we might want to add those in the future, some people suggested it. Ben Zane, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, to the mayor and city council, and all of the involved, basically, the mayor had touched base on what was going on today, it's a boil order that occurred, and we was informed by the water department, so samples, we had two samples that came up, high concentrations of E. coli, that is pretty well, not gonna be acceptable, and so, the health department told us, had us to, as I say, we normally would have to do is doing boil order, boil order is actually, this came, we have, right now, we have consistently combined, we have the east side and the west side, right now, it only pertains to the west side because we are coming out of two separate type water, separate type of plants, the west side has one tank that we have to deal with right now, the health department came down, they brought three officers today, and they came in and did this sample, what they had to do is make sure that, as, as the mayor said, the concentration of your chlorine was acceptable, they sampled it at our plant, our plant was acceptable, we went out into the fields, checked whales, inspecting them, they're all up to par, then we went to the location where the samples were full, the sample in one area came, it was a little lower than what they wanted to be, but it was passable, the other one was exactly where you want it to be, so what they recommend is that we increase the chlorine, whereas you're gonna have some customers maybe complaining about the smell of the chlorine, but that, that, that is only the fact is that we are gonna increase it until we can get past the boil order, once you get past the boil order, we can kind of cut back on the chlorine some, but the chlorine is to make sure that everything is, passed the test, and so, we, as soon as the three of us, which is where the health department, and myself and the mayor got together, and he had various questions, and he asked them, and they tend to work with us on it, as far as they're concerned, it's been like that it could have been an issue that, that there's few issues that it could have been, some of once, one of this, with the kind of contamination when you pull the sample, which is normal, can't happen like that, or it could be low pressure, like we have here in the system, due to the fact that this last storm and stuff that came up, so, all this, we'll come back on the form once they inform us on what they asked me, they report it back to us, and like the mayor said, as soon as they report the issue back to us, then we will be glad to release the information to the public. Basically, that's pretty well it, this is something that, like I say, we, this is not the first boil order, and I'm quite sure it won't be the last, but we, it's just something that nobody want to get involved, you know, wants to happen, but things happen, and once, once we get, then we have a problem, I think that the crew that I have tend to do, do the best that they can to try to correct it, and that's all that we can do when you have an issue like this. We, as soon as I got the information from the health department, I contacted the mayor, and the mayor told me to get, make sure that I immediately informed the peoples up, and I did it as briefly as and quickly as I could, and so, I think, as I say, we did three radio stations, we went to, went on the Helena, west side of the water site, and I probably, I pressured myself, went to every food department, every place that, that food, or, or, or business that we have, food, whatever, and delivered them personal papers, and they actually, all of them, again, hey, I could just hand it to them, I could explain to them what's going on, so, it took a lot of my time yesterday, and my staff is, you know, tend to do, did their part, so I, I think, I'm hoping that it was satisfied, it seemed like it was satisfied to the, to the health department, so, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Collier, this is Andre Valley.
Yes, sir.
Could you explain for the sake of the public that's listening, normally, how often you take samples, how often are you testing and et cetera, the process, so people can understand how this was detected?
Yes, sir, we are required, in the west side, is we pull nine samples, we pull one, well, nine samples a month, okay, but we do them in, in, in different times, you pull five the first time, you pull four the next time, that's, what happens is the health department run the sample, and they verify whether samples are good, and they send it back, you know, send them back to you, that is the way that we have, you know, when you find, once you, once they find something that's wrong, they usually call you ahead time, which, which is just what they did this time, normally, if your sample's good, it takes a month sometime to get them back, but you're, they, the lab, get it to the lab, and the lab takes time in processing it, but if they see any kind of problem, they would, they usually call you as soon as they find, but for western, you're doing nine samples a month, total, that's the reason why we, excuse me, that's the reason why we have to do, who is safe to, nine samples. That answers the question?
I knew that, I was, for the public.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank, thank you, Andre, any other questions? Either Mr. Collier or myself. The only thing I can think of to add, and, Mr. Cars, I asked a lot of questions today, but some of the more practical ones probably, for people that don't know, and I don't really think I knew, or maybe I've forgotten, but, the, the main, the main issue that the public needs to know, as far as what to do while under a boil order, is to boil the water for at least a minute, which is what goes out on their noses and so forth, but at least a minute before they use it in consumption, so, if they drank it, if they cook with it, and so forth, it is still, it is safe to bathe in it, to even brush your teeth in it, according to what they told me today, and even though, we're gonna wait and see what the assessment says, but I can tell you the general feeling of the four people from the Department of Health who were in the office today, was that it was probably related to, or might have, could be, could be many things, okay, so that's why they were here, and they're looking at all those things. Among the things that it could have been, considering one of the test locations, is some relationship to the 10th Street leak that occurred when the tree fell in the winter storm, and 10th Street area was, and part of Anderson was out of water for a long time, and 9th Street had, had, had their water turned off, not for a long time, but, but the water pressure on that area was way down until the leaks were fixed, and they couldn't be fixed until the tree was removed from the place where the water was, was broken, and the locate people who come and locate where it's safe to dig had had a chance to come and could get to it, they couldn't, they don't know, that's one possibility that they suspect is behind it, and that low water pressure allows pathogens, chloroform, to sometime seep into the system, so it needs to be flushed out, when something like that happens to be in extra chlorine, or disinfectant in the water, as Mr. Ben Zane has already said. So, anyway, we hope that the 18 tests come back safe, and that they are expediting it, and it will get that information either late Friday or early Saturday, and we hope to release the boil order, and of course, it's, it's a horrible thing for half of our town, literally, so, we appreciate everybody's patience, and we will publish the report on it online, and also, in case it is confusing or something, we'll try to get the questions to the public, and of course, the media will have access to it, and they'll be able to ask questions too, to simplify that for, for the average water customer, so. Any other questions, before we move on, I didn't, who was that?
It's me, Ben Zane, I had two more things I want to talk about, if you can say it, another issue that possibly could have been, was the fact is that, because of the time that, that church, we pulled a sample at church itself, there's no one at the church, and we probably should have pulled a sample, let the water run a whole lot longer, because there's, it's a dead space in the church, you know, and, and after what I said, for a long time, it can form, you know, those type of bacteria, and so they said that's possible, that that could have happened too. Now, also, we have to realize too, that it's our duty, or, hope to finish samples as soon as we can, today, we would have pulled today, the fact that it rained, we couldn't pull the sample, now hopefully, that we don't have rain in the next two days or so, because if it rained between, in the next two days or so, that can throw us off, you know, a while longer, we cannot pull the samples in the rain, so, if, if, if we, if it rained Monday, tomorrow morning about 9:00, and I can get my samples in over there, pull about 12:00, then I would have to run them over to the, to La Rock, but, I think the mayor said that we, we would have to run them over, we don't have to run over, during the week because we have a carrier, you have to make sure you get the samples in time to the carrier, so, hopefully, we'd be able to grab those samples tomorrow, the next two days without having to go to La Rock. On Friday, and normally, don't, carriers don't run, so then we would definitely have to run on Friday, but we hoping that we can get everything, the sample, in the next two days, where if, if we can, we're staying on schedule, now, I haven't actually checked schedule for the next day or two, to see if it's gonna rain, but if it rained, and it constantly rained, then we would not be able to pull samples.
Well, fortunately, we don't have rain in the forecast, but the way things have been going, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised. Thank you, Mr. Collier, any other questions before we move on down the agenda?
I have, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, regarding the notification system, you or either Mr. Collier mentioned the email system for customers who have email, so, the customers need to call you and give you their email address so they can get these alerts, or, how do you get their email addresses? Being part to that question, is there not a system where, like the schools, they call people and tell them that the school is not in session, do we have anything like that, that we could use to alert people, or notify customers?
Good question, Mr. Collier, you want to take that?
We don't have information, we can call, take the persons or whatever, there's a lot of times you call them anyway, you won't be able to get them, but that's a good idea to do, if you can come up with some type of plan like that, but there is, like I say, the Helena, or water, is connected to every customer that we have, if, you know, and I don't know if they have access to it, but that's what we have.
But, Mr. Collier, if somebody wants to be, who isn't currently getting that email, and they have email, and do, do you have, well, I don't know why I was thinking you have the ability to text, but, they can call the water department, is that the process? They call the water department, has to be added to the email list?
Yes, they can, but, like I said, I think it's, and that's, I don't know, but they should be able to, to call the water department, and ask to be, to be added on the press.
And that, that information will be helpful to know, I know, no one has asked me for my email address, and mayor, I guess I was alluding to the fact that there is some type of system, that's a telephone notification, so, that was, that was part of my question.
Yeah, um, the telephone part, yeah, if, if people, we don't have an automatic calling system.
Okay.
Like the schools, some of the schools do, maybe that's something we ought to consider. The other thing is, they need to either go to the west, the Helena website, H W H dot A R dot gov, G O V, go to the water department website, which you can reach through H W H dot A R dot G O V, and also call the water department to get the emails, if you have email and can do that, that's something that we need to tell customers. Secondly, we don't have a telephone opt-in system, I'm seeing some of the messages that are coming up to help with those questions, but anyway, we might, and, Mr. Valley suggests we might want to check with the school districts about a telephone system like that, where customers can opt in to get that through their cell phones, or regular phones if they don't have it. Other people have suggested some system, and actually, we, I asked the Arkansas Health Department people today about that, how other water departments do it and that sort of thing, they thought we were a little too big of a city to be able to quickly do the door-to-door, door hanger thing, but they said that might be something we could look at, so it might be worth looking into, some smaller companies and cities try to do that, I know when we have like a neighborhood outage, due to a water leak, our guys will actually knock on the door, so, but that's in a smaller area, the problem here is the whole, all of West Helena, so, I, I think all of that, all of those suggestions are really good suggestions, and anybody else who thinks of any, I just missed a message there, but, I think those would all be welcome, so, they have to opt in for the alert, and they can do text as well, they need to go to the website, the water department website to opt in for the alert, so I know everybody doesn't have the, you know, email and internet and all that, so that's not gonna be a solution for everybody, this is certainly my first one, and I learned a lot about that, but I think all of those are good suggestions, and, and Mr. Collier, we need to look, we need to take those up.
Yeah.
Mayor, I could probably find out how it's done through the, through the school, through the school district, it's just connected to everyone's phone, and also, lately, we've been getting alerts through Entergy, like if it's a storm coming, or if it's gonna, you know, have high winds or something like this, so I don't think it's gonna be a, a big issue, it's just, you know, settling down and finding out, but I'll try to find out what I can.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, that would be real helpful, because I know that would reach more people.
Right.
For sure, so thank you very much for that, and anybody else who wants to help that, you know, we welcome it. Any other comments or questions on this boil order issue? I know it's inconvenient, and Lord knows, I hate it, but we're working as hard as we can, and the report, those who have questions about why did it happen, how did it happen, what can we do to prevent it, I mean, those are all questions I have too, so that should be in this, in this report that the health department did today, so it would have more credibility than if I did it anyway, or, or told people, or said something, that the health department came down independently and reviewed it, and will make it public, and I don't think it's gonna be that long, I think it sounded like it could be in the next few days, so, we'll have more answers there, and anybody asking you those questions are all good questions, that's what they're here to answer, so we'll release that to the public as soon as we get it. All right, if no other questions, then we're gonna move on to the settlement discussion with Elaine Kennedy versus the city regarding the American Disabilities Act, and the Arkansas Municipal League, and Andre, do you want to be recognized to discuss that, Mr. Valley?
Yes, this afternoon, I talked to Amanda, she's, she's on the conference call, she's gonna explain with Arkansas Municipal League.
Hey, Amanda.
Do this.
Hey, everyone.
This is a lawsuit, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and she's done outstanding job representing us, and yield to her, she, she talked to me about, and I recommend that we, we follow her advice to accomplish the settlement of this suit.
Amanda, would you like to expand on that, or kind of brief the council and the public?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everyone, I'm Amanda Lefever, I'm an attorney with the Arkansas Municipal League, and I'm the attorney that's been defending the lawsuit filed by Elaine Kennedy against the city of Helena, West Helena, alleging violations of the Americans with Disabilities Act, or, I'm gonna call it the ADA, so that's, if you hear me say ADA, that's what I'm referring to, Ms. Kennedy filed suit against the city in July of 2018, in March of 2019, I met with Ms. Kennedy's attorney, and the, their ADA expert walked around the downtown area, and the expert conducted an evaluation, and determined, issued a report determining that there were violations of the ADA in the downtown area in particular, issued his report, Ms. Kennedy's attorney sent over a proposed settlement agreement, he and I have been sort of going back and forth on that for some time now, however, I think we've got it to the best possible version that we're going to get it to, the, I believe the proposed settlement agreement was circulated to the council members earlier today, sort of the salient points, without reading all 15 pages, the sort of the big hit is that the city will pay Ms. Kennedy's attorney $24,000 and 0 cents, which is representative of fees and costs, Ms. Kennedy does not get any of that money, that does not go to her, that goes to her attorney, what Ms. Kennedy gets is the barrier, the removal of barriers to access to areas around town for someone with an ADA, recognized disability, and those are set out more specifically in the settlement agreement that I believe you And those are set out more specifically in the settlement agreement that I believe you will have. Toward that end, I had previously gotten with Ms. Helen, and she got some estimates of how much that would cost the city in order to accomplish the barrier removal. One was from Larry Delkin Associates, and the estimate was about $52,400. The other was from a Norman Rowan estimated cost to perform the barrier removals was about $56,300. Of course, a project such as that, you know, it will ultimately have to be bid out, and then, and I won't be a part of that. You all would need to do that the way that you would normally conduct that during the normal course of business, you know, COVID considerations aside. But under the settle, the proposed settlement agreement, the city would have until October of 2022 to complete the barrier removal process, so the cost of removing the barriers, we can spread that out over the course of the next two years and some change. The other large part of the, or sort of larger portion of the settlement, proposed settlement agreement is that the King Biscuit Blues Festival, obviously, we are not in charge of that. That is a separate organization. But the city does permit for it, and so the settlement agreement would require that as a condition of the permitting for the festival, the festival is required to be ADA compliant. However, part of the negotiations were that I was a little concerned about the provision, just in so much as I, you know, don't want to create any liability on the part of the city if the Blues Festival doesn't get something correct. And so we've added like, there's been language incorporated into the settlement agreement that specifically provides that should the festival, you know, just not get it right or some, you know, or not get it done, that the city will not be held liable for their inability to, or failure to achieve that, those barrier removals. And I've been asked to pass along from Ms. Kennedy through her attorney that, you know, she's willing to, to the extent that we have any involvement with the Blues Festival, excuse me, that she is willing to consult with respect to wheelchair access with the Blues Festival in that regard. The primary concerns in the downtown area had to do with adequate parking, in so much as the number of spots, level changes within the spots, and the appropriate amount of space for an ADA-compliant spot, as well as proper signage, as well as what are called accessible routes and various level changes throughout the area. So I think, I, I think this is the best that we're gonna do. You know, quite frankly, it's, it's pay these proposed, it's do this now or pay more later. It, it will only get more expensive from here, and there, there are violations. I don't know. I've spoken on this quite a bit over the last few years. These are just, if you're a city, it's, it's not the, it's not a great lawsuit to get. But unfortunately, it was filed, but fortunately, moving forward, you know, we'll do what we need to do to remove the barriers and make our city, make your city a more accessible city for those with disabilities. So what I'm asking, I am recommending to the council that they vote to approve the settlement agreement. Again, that is $24,000 to Ms. Kennedy's attorney, and that would have to be paid within 10 days of the execution of the settlement agreement. She's willing to sign, she's willing to sign today. And, and then removing the barriers set forth in the settlement agreement no later than October of 2022. If we, if the council votes to approve the settlement agreement, the lawsuit gets dismissed, and we all move on. And I'll be happy to answer questions. Mayor, you're muted.
No. One thing I want to add to this. It is that this not only applies to the Blue Fest, it's particularly the lawsuit about the Blue Fest, but it's gonna affect the way that we do our festival permits, because this, this is about handicap accessibility, and the other festivals also would have to comply. It's the largest one we, that we have. But it wouldn't simply apply to King Biscuit. Of note also throughout this, there's some areas, because one of the things that we've been going back and forth with the county, Mayor Smith was mayor, is the county judge has a nice pretty parking spot right there that he, he had designated as he is. But in this, the city's, the, the city's obligation, and so immediately at the top, you see that there's a, a ramp area that, that, that we're required to repair, not the county, you know, it's between the city hall and the court. But I agree with Ms. Lefever that this is something she met at length with Leo, several times, met with, at length with the mayor, either once or twice with me, with her partner four or five times about this issue. And this American Disabilities Act, it was, it was adopted in the early 90s, and cities, municipalities, state, everyone has had significant amount of time to comply with it. And so the issue right now is that because you have so long, we're doing course of finding violation. This is a slam dunk lawsuit in, in layman's terms. Whereas things have gone, as she stated earlier, they went down, the experts identified everything on Cherry Street that they had issues with. And, but they didn't go through the whole city, this in the downtown area. And so I would encourage us to follow it. With that, I would yield.
Thank you, Andre, and I'll just say very quickly, thank you both, Andre and Amanda, for your hard work on this. I know you've worked a long time and very hard, and we really appreciate it. You know, I'm very much in favor of the settlement, as is Andre, and I've just said that, you know, it's regrettable that we aren't already accessible to people who are handicapped for our festivals and our public buildings and all the rest. I, I hope that we approve the settlement, also hope that it, it, it sparks, it sparks us to, to resolve and think more about these issues and resolve these issues, period, before we have to be sued to recognize it, so. But we have been, and we do now, and I think this is a good settlement. I agree with both the previous speakers, and thank you again for your work. And then I'll turn it over. Anybody else here? I'm sure other people have questions.
Mr. Mayor, Joe St. Columbia.
Yes, sir. Mr. St. Columbia.
It's obvious to me that we are, the city, is guilty of, of not having these sites taken care of sooner. They should have been done downtown and all over the city as far as that goes, West Helena as well. And we need to look not just in Helena, but also in West Helena, the business districts, and around some of the other areas as well. I, I don't want to see us get, carry this thing on any further. We can get out of it right now by paying the attorney fees of $24,000. I'd like to ask if this, is that fee negotiable?
Mr. St. Columbia, that is the negotiated fee. He asked for approximately, I think, five grand more, and I came back at him, and we, that, that's about all he's willing to go down. It's, it's an hourly fee, and so the way that that number is calculated is the number of hours that the attorney for Ms. Kennedy has expended on the case times his hourly rate. I think I was able to convince him a little that his rate is a little high for this area. He's coming right out of Alabama, and I guess in Alabama, their lawyers get paid just a little bit more than Arkansas lawyers. But I think this is the best that we're gonna do, because the more, so, and by way of explanation, if the council say doesn't approve the settlement agreement tonight, we go litigate it, and her attorney spends more, spends more time on the litigation. We go to court, we lose, he gets to bill all that additional time. So the 24 grand is, I think, the best that we're gonna get on that, on his fees.
If that's the case, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we accept the settlement and pay the attorney fee of $24,000, get this behind us.
Thank you, Mr. St. Columbia. Make some motion that we, is that Ms. Ford? Who is that? Okay, Ms. Ford seconds the motion that we approve the settlement offer as described. Andre, do you have anything to add?
I had a question.
Don, who's that?
That's, yeah, that's me, Don.
Miss Bradley, I'm sorry. Sorry for me to tell you.
No problem. Ms. Lefever, do you have, are there any concerns about future litigation to the extent that we're including that, that, that language about the King Biscuit Blues Festival? I'm thinking about all of the different activities that we may permit in the city, whether it be building or whatever, festivals, all types of events. Would that impact us in the future that we're including them, we're requiring them, I guess, to do this? At least we're making it a part of the permit. Going forward, are we gonna have to make everybody say that they're gonna be ADA compliant? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of the split the baby answer. So the reason that it's included in the settlement agreement with Ms. Kennedy is, if, if we go back and look at the complaint, she's obvious, her primary concern is obviously the King Biscuit Blues Festival. When she went to her, I had an early discussion with her attorney, sort of explaining that that's not the city's festival. We don't own that, we don't operate that, but we do permit for it. And so it is specific to the settlement agreement. However, and specific to the settlement agreement, it, it should not be creating any, it's not creating any liability for the city in so much as we are permitting that if the Blues Festival is noncompliant. With respect to any other sort of festivals that the city permits for, I would advise that the ADA compliance be part of any permitting procedure that the city does, just because we are permitting for that. However, the, you know, if it's not something that the city owns, operates, maintains, and it's not ADA compliant, you know, that's, that's an issue that's gonna have to be laid at someone else's door. Did, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Now, part of it is, in paragraph.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Heather. Go ahead, Andre. Andre. Andre may be waiting to get back on. Any other questions while we wait for Andre to get back on?
I am on.
Oh, you are?
I am on.
I thought you got cut off there. What were you saying?
Oh, I was saying, just like the courthouse, we don't own the stage. The state owns the stage. We, we own, we own the land around the stage. So we'd have to cooperate with them, and they'd have to cooperate with us relating to that as well. But we had to repair everything around it because it's our property, but they actually own the stage. If, if you remember the debacle a few years ago with the September Blue Fair. The debacle was, they, they tried, but didn't book with, didn't book with the owner. Am I breaking up?
You're breaking up a little bit there, Andre. We've got most of it, I think.
Okay, I, I was done. I would just, I would just saying, I would just saying in paragraph D of Roman 2, we don't own, we don't own the stage. I don't know why I'm breaking up.
We heard most of it.
I don't know why I'm breaking up.
I think we heard most of it. Now, Ms. Amanda, I'll just ask, this, this also applies to public buildings or not city hall, for example?
Yes, so, yeah, so the ADA requirements are applicable to all city services and facilities. Ms. Kennedy was primarily concerned with the King Biscuit Blues Festival and the areas of the city surrounding it. So for instance, that's why we're, we were, the, so all the expert looked at were those areas that she was concerned with in particular. That's why we didn't go into other areas of the city. The settlement agreement doesn't cover, for instance, city hall or anything like that. But I would highly advise the city to have someone evaluate those facilities and services, and with an eye towards removing any barriers that may, that may exist in either the services or the facilities, with the understanding that should someone, should an ADA expert come and evaluate all of the city's services and facilities, that the primary area of barrier removal first will need to be those addressed by Ms. Kennedy in the settlement agreement.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions? We have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, Joe St. Columbia. My comment on all of this, since you mentioned the Blues Festival, King Biscuit Blues Festival, other festivals are involved, but someone else might come in and file suit against us on this same issue, since we didn't mention any other festival. You see where I'm coming from on that, Ms. Lefever?
Sure, and I'm happy to answer that, Mr. Columbia. So let me, let me kind of differentiate to, between a couple of different things. So the King Biscuit Blues Festival, you know, we permit for that, but it's not our festival. When I say our, I mean the city of Helena, West Helena. It's not.
We permit for all the festivals.
But we permit, right. And so if somebody were, but, but the reason that this, that we, the city, are discussing the settlement is because of those areas that we do own and control and maintain, the areas that are the subject of the Section 1 of the settlement agreement. So in future, yes, somebody could come in and sue the city for ADA violations in connection with other areas of the city and town, just like, and to be fair, I'm not saying that there are ADA violations elsewhere. You know, anybody can sue anybody for anything these days. You know, just because you would sue doesn't mean you've done something wrong necessarily. However, specific to the areas that the settlement agreement covers, should someone come in and try to file suit regarding something that the settlement, a subject area that the settlement agreement covers, we would very quickly waive the settlement agreement in the, at the court and say, no, 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 no. We're working on this. We know we have the obligation, but we are a municipality. These things do take time, you know. We do have to make sure that the trash runs and, you know, the streets are cleaned and the city has water and things of that nature. So it's never done with an eye towards preventing the city from providing essential, essential services or being an undue burden. And so that's the best I think I can, I can't say, no, you'll never get sued.
Yeah, sure, I can understand. People sue you for, you know, anything, anytime, but getting judgment against you is a thing. And you feel safe on this.
Yes, I mean, this, this takes care of Ms. Kennedy. There's no admission of liability. It does cover the city removing barriers from the areas in, specific to the settlement conference, I'm sorry, not settlement conference, settlement agreement. And we'll echo the mayor's earlier sentiments that, you know, that it's important, and it was required of us a long time ago. And so, you know, once we satisfy the requirements of the settlement agreement, you know, I would highly recommend taking a good long look at everything else and, you know, moving forward with any barrier removal that might be identified.
Thank you, Amanda, Mr. St. Columbia. Other questions on, on the matter before the council? If not, Ms. Sandy, if you could call the row.
Forward.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Franklin. Crockett.
Yes.
St. Columbia.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Five yes, one absent.
Okay, motion is approved. Is there anything else we need to do in terms of preliminary procedure on that? Are we good?
We're good.
Okay. Amanda, thank you so much again for all your work on this, we really appreciate it, and also Andre, you will. And I hope this, like I said, spurs us to be more aware of ADA issues, because we want our city to be accessible. We're not the wealthy city, that we might be one of the poorest, but we need to do, because we have had a long time, you know, to get with this, and so we need to prioritize it, maybe this will spur us to do that. So, thank you, thank you, members of the council, and at this point, we'll move on down the agenda, and thank you for joining our meeting. I have a cat walking around. So, we're gonna move, we're, thank you again, we're gonna move on to the next time on the agenda, the resolution to amend the 2019 budget. This has been on the agenda every, I think, every meeting, for the last several meetings. Again, what this is, is a, a basic cleanup budget to correct the appropriation categories that were in the 2019 budget, fiscal year 2019 budget. We actually, the, the main two issues are, we paid the, our some, in fact, we just, we just experienced one reason we want to keep our dues paid with the American, I mean, with the Arkansas Municipal League Defense Fund, because Ms. Amanda is, that's who she works for, and basically, you just saw a great example of what we get for that, but we paid our twenty, all right, you might have to tell me, but we paid our dues, or we paid up for that, we actually had a better year financially, as y'all know, and so we paid our bill twice, but one for fiscal 2018, one, 2019, I'm sorry, we paid fiscal year 2019 in January or February, even though it was due in December, that was budgeted, but we got, we always get billed for that in the December, the prior, before the, the beginning of the new fiscal year. We had the money, so we paid, as we're on time this time, our municipal league defense fund dues in December 2019 for 2020. So technically, we paid our dues twice in 2019, but that got us arguably out of our appropriation category. And the other issue was the landfill, as you know, we had a few months there where landfill was suffering, and we made some payments out of the general fund instead of out of the landfill fund. So what this does is shift the money to appropriate categories, it's been done, as far as I know, every year. We did it last year for 2018, and so, I know, I speak for the treasurer when I say that we would appreciate a resolution to amend the 2019 budget to reflect those changes as submitted before the council. Having brought that up, any questions, comments, open for a motion? Discussion?
Oh. Mr. Mayor Joe Saint Columbia.
Yes, sir.
I again will make a motion that we amend by the resolution, the 2019 budget.
Okay, Mr. Saint Columbia, and the amendment as, as presented by the treasurer? Okay, Mr. Saint Columbia moves a resolution to amend the 2019 budget to reflect the actual categories as submitted by the treasurer. Is there a second? Make sure I allow for people to get off mute, is there a second to the motion to amend the 2019 budget? Okay, if not, the motion dies for lack of a second, thank you. We'll move on to update on state police investigation of Officer Tom. I'm not sure who, who wanted that on there, who wants to talk about that, but I'll open that up for whoever that might be.
What, Mr. Mayor Joe Saint Columbia, what is that all about? I mean, the state police did a investigation, is that the?
Well, I don't know if you were at the meeting, but the council made a mo, council approved a motion to request the state police to investigate overtime, potential overtime abuse.
Yeah, I recall that.
And so that was submitted to the state police, and they are following the process accordingly. That's not only about all I can say, that's about all I know.
Okay.
But if there's anybody, I'm not sure who asked for it to be on the agenda, but.
Can you understand me? Am I still breaking up?
Andre, go ahead, we can hear you, I think.
Okay, well, I don't know who asked for it to be on the agenda, but what the status is, state police came down, they met with, with me, and they met with several other people, they have your resolution. They, they just did a preliminary question, then they sent it, they sent a letter, email back to me saying that I need to ask Todd Murray to, to do the request for investig, I'm not the prosecutor, and the city council is not the prosecutor, so I, I Murray, and he asked me subpoena for the, that Hayes, and then him and he'll make a decision after. And for any other officer that we may have, so that process is doing this week, and getting it to him, go forward with whatever investigation they're going, from what Todd Murray says, they have every, every document that you all give me, they already have it, but they're waiting on a formal letter from Todd Murray, but he says he will not send it until he sees all of the records together where, where the people alleged to be working dual hours for the same time period. So, so I'll be doing a prosecutor subpoena this week for me, a city attorney, for them to deliver it to me and Todd Murray, so he can look at it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Joe Saint Columbia, I'd like to ask the city attorney if he'll keep us in the loop and keep us advised as to what's going on in this, and we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, Saint Columbia, I will make my best attempt to do so, but once it leaves my hand, I'll be out of the loop because it's them doing the investigation, not us.
Yeah.
I would tell you, when I, when I've done this, when I've done the subpoena and got it to Mr. Murray, he would make, he would probably do some formal letters to DM, and he'll copy us if he sees that there's something that, that's there to go forward, but they did, they came down to the preliminary thing, they met with me, they met with Alamar, and they met with some others in City Hall, they said, well, under their rules, the commander called me, and he said he cannot do an investigation based on a request of the city council or the city attorney, it has to be from the prosecutor for the district.
Thank you for that update, Andre, any other questions on that issue? Okay, if no other questions on that, we'll move on to the approval of professional services for Attorney Jimmy Wilson to represent the city attorney in certain cases, and Andre, you're pretty popular tonight, you wanna take that on?
Well, what, what has been happening with that, I, I have a conflict of interest relating to David Breis and David Frieda Bird, they have constantly sued me and others, and they've filed, not only lawsuits against me, but there's other people, and I don't prosecute them, and we have to hire attorneys to prosecute them for numerous reasons, but Jimmy Wilson, in the past, we've hired Fay Reed, she did a few cases regarding them, then we've hired Randall Bland and someone else, I'm trying to think, it was a third party, I can't remember, but Mr. Wilson, last year, he did some cases, and Mr. Frieda Bird and Mr. LeBrace both filed all types of affidavits against people, and other people filed affidavits against them, so their cases are always with the district court, and they're quite litigious in, in, in the way that they carry things on about their complaints, and so, I haven't seen the document that we have, but Mr. Wilson left me two days ago, saying that he was sending another document because there's more cases that he received. When I talked to the Arkansas State Committee on Professional Conduct, what I talked to them about, because they were filing so many things against me without merit, that if you just use a third party and then take yourself out the loop, because it was paperwork after paperwork, but that was not meritorious. And so, to that, when Mayor Hollerwell was the mayor, we did contract with the other lawyers, and Mayor Smith continued that through Mr. Wilson, and there's some other case that come up involving the two of them, and that's the nature of the contract, Mr. Turner may have additional information, or the mayor may have additional information, he spoke with Mr. Turner, I don't think he spoke with the mayor. I'm talking about Turner Wilson.
The only thing I would add to that is, Mr. Wilson was about the only attorney he would agree to take it. But, and there's an appropriation issue, I think.
Oh, thank you, mayor. Right, there's appropriation issue, the one thing I want to tell the council, I, when they first started filing stuff against, against me, which was not, without any merit, I sent a letter to, an email to seventy lawyers, and nobody was telling me to deal with it, and most of the local lawyers would not touch it. Jimmy Wilson was on the paper, stepped forward and said, hey, I'll go ahead and enter the justice and handle all the cases, because he's handling cases against them, it's for them as well, because he's acting as, as not as the city attorney, but he's acting as the special city attorney to handle these matters. So, I have no supervisor authority over him, but he makes whatever decisions he wants to make on them, but yes, I wanted to say it again, previously, previously, just understanding what, what happened. I believe there were possibly, in my email, I think it was possibly sixty-five, seventy lawyers that turned down. I sent it to everybody in district, asking, hey, do you all want, somebody help me with that, no. So, that's.
And then, on the appropriate, appropriation issue, there are a lot, you might have, I don't know, this might generate a lot of questions, but, so hold that thought. Derek, you want to try to help me explain, I don't have it in writing, or maybe if I do, I don't see it.
Well, I can explain one other part, mayor, that I left out, in these cases, the grievance we have with the previous attorneys, that when they handled the cases, that we pay them $2,500. Well, you all understand, the mayor's spending limit on these is $5,000, and so, we're getting into an area of serial contracts, as part of what it is, and you need the money appropriated to pay him, and that's, that's part of the issue, but it's, it's, it's ongoing, because I can't tell you the number of cases to have, but it's been, it's been many.
Well, and the other related to that is the, how much we have in that category in the budget, and Derek, Derek, do you want to speak to that?
Well, I mean, it's just simply that we, we just need to, the council needs to appropriate some more funds to make sure we have enough to legally spend, with the Judge Kings, the, the portion of the city's salary that we pay to the state of Arkansas is in that line item, and also, so a couple of other attorneys that help Mr. Vallow with, what do you call it, the, no, I mean, conflict of interest issues. And so, Mr. Wilson is just, you know, I guess, the number of case, you know, are becoming to the point that they will probably exceed what was appropriated, so it's just a matter of just appropriating more funds. So we can legally, you know, we won't spend illegally.
I guess my question is, what do we do when we get to that limit, which we are gonna do at this rate, right?
Well, we don't, we can't legally spend beyond appropriations.
So there's the $5,000 issue in the serial contract, but there's also the total in that category in the budget?
Yeah, I'm just simply saying that, you know, what was budgeted was thirty-one thou, well, what was budgeted was $31,263, and so far, we've expended $26,442. There are only five thousand dollars left in that category, so you have about, Judge King has several more months of payments that we have to pay to the state. And so, I'm not seeing exactly how much that is, but.
Sixteen?
$1,600, so.
A month, yeah.
Yeah. A month. They just need to appropriate more, it's not a question of this, you know, you know, they just need to put more in now, so we can spend within limits.
So, I guess, Andre, we need approval of professional service contract, but we also need additional appropriations authority.
Mr. Wilson has, we have a contract, the contract is, we have a signed contract, he just doesn't have enough appropriated to continue to pay him, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, can, can we do these things on a case by case issue, rather than just put a, dump a lump sum of money into the budget, whatever it comes?
I'm open, I'm open to, I'm open to doing it however y'all want to do it.
We'd like to have a special call meeting every time he, every time Mr. LeBrace or Mr. Frieda Bird filed a lawsuit for whatever particular reason.
No, I'm, I'm in agreement that we need, we need to hire Mr. Wilson, I'm just talking about the money, you know, dumping a large amount of money into one issue, I, I don't know if that would be the right thing to do.
Well, Mr. Saint Columbia, one thing, one thing that I'm gonna say, one caveat, if one of them had to be, these are professional services, so they are contracts that, that are done, and if it's over, if it's over $5,000, you still, whether we didn't bid it, you would, you would, you would get notice of it, but it's not bidding. I was trying to think it through, as you were saying, the, the issue I think Mr. Turner's looking at, you still need to spend the spending in, in some sense, but however you do it, it's, it's fine with me, so that you all could have some kind of understanding as to, as to what's ongoing, because the three attorneys, there's Mr. Wilson, there's Amy Boe, and there's Chuck Havert, there's another issue relating to what's the habit, he is the husband of Ms. Helen Havert, so at another meeting, we got the approval ordinance relating to, to him. The issue with them is the two, the two deputy prosecutors represent the city on issues that involve Zane Vallow, so that when Zane Vallow cases come to court, I have nothing to do with anything with Zane Vallow cases, because he's my, he's my brother, and we don't want the appearance of impropriety that I'm trying to dismiss case, he's my brother, et cetera, so that's what, that's what that one is, those, the other two. But those are the three attorneys that I'm aware of, off the top of my head, have an outstanding contract previously from Randall Bland, where he represented the city on David LeBrace, and he represents the city relating to a matter with a water department employee, I said Stevens, so those are, I'm aware of off the top of my head.
Andre, are we keeping track of Mr. Wilson's hours on this case and what they're for? I mean, who's looking over?
He's supposed to, something to Mr. Turner.
Who's looking over?
Yeah, we have all that information, we have all of that information.
Yeah, he's.
Appropriate some more money, I, I, it's, it's, they need to just put some more money into that line. If we get to a point where we get to that level that they have already appropriated, we cannot legally spend beyond that level.
Yeah, and mayor, what I was saying, part of it, I don't have supervised control over it, but he does, it submits the bill to Mr. Turner and to, and to, and to you, for you all to, to, to look at.
Okay, so at this point, Derek, if we get up, that we're very close now to the.
Yes.
Line item, if we bump up against it, we're just gonna have to stop signing checks, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct, until you make a decision, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have any authority to spend it.
Okay. Well, all right, well, any other questions, comments from the council?
I mean, there's, there's enough, his, whatever he's been charging so far, there's enough to, to cover him and the other attorneys and Judge King for another month, so if you just want to sit away and think about how much you want to appropriate, that's, that's fine, but, I mean, I'm giving you enough time to kind of think about it. You have, they have enough, they have another month.
Right.
You know, what they usually charge. But if it gets.
Well, basically, we put the council on notice that we're getting ready to head into illegal territory if we spend over that amount, right?
Yes.
So.
They probably need to appropriate $24,000 for the settlement, because we don't have a line item for, for that particular item.
Say that again, for what?
Probably need to appropriate the $24,000 for the. Probably need to appropriate the twenty-four thousand dollars for the settlement, because they don't, we don't have a length, we don't have a, a line item.
That's a good point. Well, did we not just do that with the resolution?
When they pass the expenditure, this, this, this is the deal, the budget, the budget is the appropriation. When you pass the budget, you pass, you make the appropriations when you make the budget. And so, just because they, they approve an expenditure, we can still go over appropriations. If you have projected revenue, you can't go, you can't, but you can't deficit spend. And so, and your.
Okay.
The expenses are based upon your, your projected revenue. So even though you make an expenditure, you still could go over the budgeted amount.
Okay.
And that's illegal anyway, to go over the budgeted amount. So they need to appropriate, they have enough room in the surplus to appropriate twenty-four thousand dollars, they just need to appropriate.
Well, I'd say we need to do that tonight.
I mean, it probably should have been done simultaneously, I just thought about it, but.
Well, I'm glad you did. I'm glad you did. If there's any question about that.
And that, and that prevents later on having budget issues about what's been appropriated, it's the proper process. And so, just open funds and you, you appropriate the funds and you give us authority to.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Joe St. Columbia, in the past years, uh, how have we handled that, Mr. Turner? Uh, I thought you took it out of the general fund.
Yeah, but in the past years, we, we may have exceeded the appropriations, and then you do a cleanup budget later on in the year. So it appears that the council is unwilling to do a, a cleanup budget. So to prevent that in the future, it appears to make the appropriations. If you don't have the, uh, proper amount of appropriations for a particular landmark, make the appropriations before you approve the expenditure. Or before we make the expenditure.
Mr. Turner, I have a question. It's Andre Villar, City Attorney. Last year, we appropriated money for the, the, the firm relating to the landfill. Uh, is that in this budget, or do they need to reaffirm what the, the expenditures on, on, on that?
For who? The attorneys?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I included them because I knew they had sent us a bill, and they gave sort of an estimate of what they, what they, uh, the, the future charges may be. So I can make some sort of.
Okay.
On that, yeah. So we, we did, there is, there is, well, okay, well, there are funds for, uh, legal services. That were already budgeted for that particular issue. So you can use, you know, you, if you don't make appropriation for this particular issue, you can use those funds. But when we pay those guys, we're going to be sure. You can't see what I'm saying? Cause we have.
Correct. I would, I would, I was just making sure that, that they were aware of both line items. I was just trying to break, flesh that out.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, any other questions? I, I feel like we need to address the appropriations for the Americans with Disabilities Act settlement that we just approved. If it's not in there, Derek, I feel like we need a resolution to do that tonight. Andre, you agree with that?
Yeah, I just found out about that fifteen.
Yes, uh, a, a motion carried the same weight as, 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 as a resolution, and all we need is a resolution for this power, the counties still need the ordinances for appropriation, but cities don't. But I think that the settlement itself, you've, you've voted and you advised that you're spending four thousand, you made the, you made the approbation, you still haven't, in a budget for.
The law says, the law says the approval of the budget amounts to the appropriation. What, what I'm saying is, Andre, you can, you can approve an expenditure, and you may already have an appropriation. So in that case, you would not need to make an appropriation. But you're actually looking for something that you don't even have an appropriation for. And so you could exceed the budget. If we make that expenditure, we would be spending illegally, because those funds have not been appropriated. And I'm just following the council's advice, so you're going to go through the proper processes to do things correctly. And so that, to me, that would be the proper process to appropriate the funds before you expedite the funds. I don't see what the problem is. You have enough money to, to, it's just a simple.
I don't.
Both in the pay.
I don't see.
Twenty-four thousand dollars.
I don't, I don't see an issue either. You, you, you as the treasurer, uh, uh, are recommending that, that we make sure we make the appropriation? Agreed. Go, go ahead and make the appropriation. Y'all, tell me what, what we're saying out of, but, out of abundance of caution, what we're saying is separately approve the, the appropriate, is what we're saying out of abundance of caution.
Yeah, yeah, in this case, there are no appropriations. If there had been appropriations made for something else, where, and they are, like I said, you reminded me, there are appropriations for the, the, the landfill attorneys. But you would be using those appropriations, so you need to put in additional appropriations for this category, just to be, so we won't exceed our legal spending limit.
Now, I want to make sure we, we separate the two issues. One is the, one is still the settlement, ADA settlement, all right? And the other one is the issue of legal fees and the, basically the, the court, uh, district budget for this category.
I mean, my recommendation for, as far as the, I mean, from what it looks like so far, and it may go beyond it, I, I think twenty thousand dollars on the, the, um,
District Court.
Yeah, for the district court would be appropriate. It should be enough, and, you know, I'll let you know sometime in October, September, October, if that's not, if it doesn't look that way. But right now, that looks like that should be enough.
Okay, how, um, um, so the twenty-four thousand you think is in there? Is that what you're saying?
We need to appropriate, there's money in there for the landfill attorneys. It's already appropriate.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Additional twenty-four thousand for settlement.
How about, how about we deal with that first and just get that off the table? Is there a motion? Uh, we've already adopted the settlement itself. Is there a motion to pa, a resolution, a motion to pass a resolution? Or do we need a resolution? Just a motion to approve the appropriations or the increased?
Yeah, just a motion to, yeah, motion to appropriate twenty-four thousand for, for the settlement.
Physical twenty-twenty budget. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to amend the twenty-twenty budget to increase the appropriation by at least twenty-four thousand dollars to be used for the ADA lawsuit settlement as recommended by the Arkansas Department of Labor?
So move.
Who wants to go first? I think Ms. Davis made that motion, and I didn't hear, I'm going to say Ms. Ford seconded the motion, because she did that for the original. Okay, any other discussion on that? If, if not, uh, Ms. Ramsey Calderon.
Davis?
Yes.
Thanks, Columbia.
Yes.
Yes.
Franklin? Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we've accomplished that. The next thing would be what we're talking about on this, uh, hiring, uh, or not hiring, but being able to pay uh, Mr. Wilson his fees, uh, without going over the appropriation limit.
And it's not only Mr. Wilson, it's, it's the, just to make sure Mr. Wilson and others as well.
Mr. Wilson and also the, the district court judge's salary, right?
And, and.
Right. Same category?
Yeah, they're the same lineup.
Right, as, as well, as well as Chuck Havert and Amy Boer in that lineup, deputy prosecutor.
And how, how much do you want to recommend tonight? Uh, how much to raise that, increase that by?
I said twenty, but I would, I would say twenty-five is the best, safe side.
Uh, this is one. I thought that we just said that we were going, uh, we had a month to think about this.
Oh, you, you do. I mean, you don't have to do, I mean, you have enough to, you have enough in and out to pay them through, through May.
Any, any other discussion on that? Questions? Comments? Um, so I guess to move on, is there a motion to increase the appropriations by twenty-five thousand dollars to allow for the expenditures in the district court budget for uh, attorney's fees as stated, and, uh, the judge's salary as recommended by the treasurer?
I, I would make that motion with one amendment.
Yes.
And, and since there's no motion, is really what you said in the form of a motion, but I would, I would, would make it full of twenty-five. Do it at ten thousand, and then we can reevaluate, um, when necessary.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Etherly makes a motion that we, um, make that amount, ten thousand instead of twenty-five thousand. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconds to the motion. Again, the motion is to increase the appropriation for that category in the budget as stated by ten thousand dollars, this year twenty-twenty. Motion on the floor and a second. Any other discussion or questions? If not, Calderon.
Forward?
Yes.
Rockers?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Columbia?
Yes.
Fabius?
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, the last item on the agenda is, uh, update on COVID testing.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I want to also, I think, I sent most of the guys an update on the farmers overtime, and so this past pay period, it wasn't as much. I, I'm not sure if you guys read the email, but I did send you an email. Uh, they did have, uh, only four thousand dollars in, in overtime for that pay period, which is great. And so, that leaves them so far with, I think, about thirteen thousand in the budget. And like I said earlier, they had been averaging about ten thousand dollars a pay period. So if they do, at average or less, then they should be okay for another pay period. But that's also, uh, something else I need you guys to kind of think about too, to, uh, in, increase the appropriations for farmers overtime. And it doesn't have to be day, day to day, because, uh, like I said, the overtime for the last pay period was pretty low, it was only four thousand dollars. But I just want to bring that to your attention and, and, uh, keep that on your mind. They have to, you may have to make, uh, increased appropriations at the next, at the next, uh, city council meeting.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Turner, on that? Okay, so we'll move. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Uh, we'll move on to the update COVID testing. So what that's about, you should have all gotten an email or something today, uh, yesterday or today. This Friday from ten to four, uh, the Hellin Hospital, uh, the city natural state laboratories, which is a private lab out of North Little Rock that's been vetted and approved by the governor's office and the department of health will be located at the hospital to test, or excuse me, screen and test pe, employees and people who have health insurance cards. Uh, primarily, what we want to do is start with first responders and healthcare professionals. And I would like to see every city employee at least have the opportunity to, to get tested, or get screened for testing and possibly tested. The, the biggest thing about this is they come, uh, now that more tests are available, every week, like last week, we had East Arkansas Health Centers of, um, Family Health Centers of, of Eastern Arkansas had a great event, uh, in three weeks in a row before that, UAMs East. But as each week goes by, more tests become available and they lower the screening requirements for what it takes to get a test. Um, if, if you don't already know, it's been established that people who are asymptomatic, who don't have symptoms, could be uh, carrying this, uh, i- inside them and not know it yet, and possibly expose other people. Obviously, our public health professionals and our first responders are the most important um, folks that we want to, that we're concerned about. Uh, they have up to five hundred tests available, which is at least five times more than we've had, and we may not, they may not test that many. But this, the hospital has agreed to, um, make this testing, screening and testing available for their employees, that's over a hundred. We have over, well over a hundred employees. Uh, so we're asking them to sign in, uh, they fill out a form. Uh, they can opt out, but, you know, they just have to, uh, check a box and they can go about their business. But if they do want to, then they, they, you know, check that box and they go to the screening station. And, uh, the questions that are asked in the screening process are much, it's a much lower bar. And more people than we've had so far will be eligible for testing. So at that point, they'll move on to the testing station, uh, if, if they're eligible, and then be tested, and they, that's Friday, so they expect results maybe back following Thursday. Uh, but not just the hospital in the city. If you have, anybody who's in emergency service, anybody who's in food preparation at schools, for example. Uh, we've asked the chamber, I've asked Julie Going Stradion, who's been heading up all the food issues, to reach out to anybody in the food service sector and schools. And also, they are contacting all the clinic, the doctor's clinics, medical clinics, senior citizen, uh, centers and homes. We want to make sure they know about it, that they're, that it's available to them. Ten to four is also the longest period we've had for testing. It's usually been a very short window. So I just wanted to, uh, sort of announce that, I guess, or, you know, on the, at the council meeting, make sure you know that, uh, all city employees are eligible for it. Uh, we want them to come between ten and one o'clock, because we want to uh, try and schedule as many of these as we possibly can and give windows, so we don't get overrun. It's not one of these that we're, uh, it's, if you have an insurance card and an ID. Okay, there's no out-of-pocket cost to the individual. It's a drive-through clinic, but walk-ins, especially from the hospital, but other walk-ins will be, will be allowed. Nobody will be turned away, but, uh, unlike, say, last week or UAMs, they only get their money through the testing, and they don't make money. Uh, in the case of Medicaid and Medicare, they actually lose money. Uh, but they've agreed to help the governor and the department of health, uh, ramp up testing. They've been all over Arkansas, we're really lucky to have them here. And we're grateful for the hospital's participation and everybody else's participation. The Hellin Health Foundation provides the lunches. Uh, we're trying to use local restaurateurs who might have been impacted by this crisis as much as possible. So let me tell, I'm going to just ask, are there any questions about that?
Yes, this is one. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mandatory for employees, or do they have to go to the site?
If they're working that day, they have to show up and report and sign in, but they don't have to be tested or screened. They can opt out.
So is that legal?
Yeah, they tell me it is, as long as they have an opt-out provision, right? So, but, but it is questionable whether it's legal.
As long as there's an opt-out provision.
Yeah.
As long as there's a provision, you're not mandated, they're, they're, you're employed, or you can tell you can go, but they, they ensure that they, they, that they could either choose, I want to submit, that's why I want to opt out. And so the opt-out provision doesn't make it mandatory that you, uh, have, have sample taken from.
Okay, what about, what about the people who don't have insurance cards, that want to actually take the test?
Yeah, I'm on O.
Well, if you have Medicare, you're, you have a card.
Okay, I've got Medicare.
If you're, if you're on Medicaid. Well, the, the last four clinics we've had in a row have been for the public, for people that, whether they did or they didn't, it didn't matter, it was, it's the first come, first served. So this company, and they're not going to turn anybody away, but we're not publicly advertising it as similar to the other ones, because it is primarily for employers and employees and people who have some form of health insurance. That way, at least they don't lose money. But no, they're not going to turn anybody away, but at the same time, uh, and I mean, really judging by the last four, you know, we didn't average that many people, I mean, in my opinion, as many people as we should have. Um, anyway, and we advertised like crazy. They were successful in, in the sense that, uh, it made it eligible to everybody. Uh, we did, they did test people. I think forty-eight was tested last Thursday, which I was. Uh, we did, they did test people, I think forty-eight was tested last Thursday, which I was pretty excited about. And they were too. But they ha, like I said, every week they lower the, I'm hoping, this is not the last time, I hope. I hope that as the department of health, UAMS and others get more tests, that we'll see more of this for the, uh, public at large. But this is primarily for employers, first responders, public health, uh, officials. But, you know, anybody that works in medical clinics, food, we're also reaching out to the hospitality industry, anybody that handles food and they have health insurance and, or some version of, of medical card, it can be Medicaid, it can be Medicare.
Okay, so once they test, what, will the, just say if an employee went and got tested and they were told to quarantine, do they have to use holiday pay or uh, sick leave or something so that they won't lose their pay?
Well, first of all, like, that's a good question. In the past, the requirement was that if you were symptomatic, you couldn't be tested unless you were symptomatic. Well, if you were symptomatic, you were supposed to be quarantined anyway, so, um, it was a twenty-four, forty-eight hour quarantine. Now that they are testing asymptomatic people, they've dropped that as any kind of mandatory requirement uh, for just testing. Obviously, if a test comes back positive, that's, that's completely different. But just being positive, I mean, just being tested is not gonna be a reason to have a forty-eight hour quarantine in this, in this test.
Well, some of the people who were tested at the last one at the clinic, they were just told to go home and quarantine.
No, that's exactly right, and up until last week, that was the case. Of course, this will be Friday and they will have the weekend and, uh, if they're asymptomatic though, the CDC standards are different. And before, they didn't even get tested unless they were symptomatic. But you're right, last Thursday, they did test some people who were asymptomatic, uh, and they did encourage them to. And I think they'd still encourage people to do that on their own. The reason I asked about that, it's a great question, one of the reasons they have recommended it is because if you self-quarantine, not just inside your house, but, I mean, not just from others outside your house, but even inside your house, from people inside your house, so in your bedroom, for example, that kind of thing. Is so that if you test positive, or if you test ne, I'm sorry, if you test negative, in that forty-eight hour period, you haven't been exposed to anybody. So it's not gonna give you a false sense of hope. And if you get a false sense of hope, go out there and infect somebody else, that's public health risk. But they are only, they were only testing most up until last week, they were only testing symptomatic people. So the bottom line is, this Friday, the shorter answer is, they won't require that. Any other questions? It's a good question, though, any other questions or comments? Okay, just encourage, I mean, uh, they've got five hundred tests, encourage people. Uh, Everdane, we've reached out to the county also, uh, just for your information, uh, so that they know they're eligible. Their employees are eligible. And if you have an employee that has, is, is, they're on their spouse's insurance, for example, they can still come, as long as they have a card in. So. All right, other questions about that? And then we can still answer questions later if you, if they come up.
I'm over with your.
But before, before you do that, any other, well, any other business to come before the council? Okay, Mr. St. Columbia? Is there a second?
Everybody have a good evening.
I didn't hear that, but anyway, thank you for every second of that, uh, meeting is there, and thank you.
All right.